Okay, we're gonna start the September 3rd, 2025, 6:00 PM. We're gonna call the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting to Order. We have our guests here from New Hampshire Motor Speedway. Thank you for coming. First and foremost, we're gonna stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go around the room and introduce everybody, starting with here. Just wanna say your name and rank and who you're with, and we'll just go around the room and we'll wind up at your guys' table.
Sean Nye, Sergeant with Loudon Police Department.
Dan Flanders, Chief of Police.
Brendan Pearl, Town Administrator.
Twain Gilman, Board of Selectmen.
Attorney Michael Courtney, Town Attorney.
Jeff Miller, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Griffin, Board of Selectmen.
Russ Pearl, Road Agent.
Tom Blanchard, Fire Chief.
Deputy Chief Lilly.
David McGrath, General Manager, New Hampshire Motor Speedway.
Bill Glong with the firm of McLean Middleton, New Hampshire Motor Speedway.
Matt Gozian, VP of Operations and Events, NHMS.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, everyone. So, just a couple of ground rules. It is a public meeting. We are being recorded both on YouTube and on recorder. One conversation at a time, per person. I mean, just try not to overtalk each other and try to manipulate the conversation. We'll stop the meeting and reset and go and move forward. And pretty much, that's pretty much the only ground rules we have. I mean, obviously, it's, we're trying to, it's a professional meeting. We're trying to get some work done. We're trying to jump over some hurdles and try to clear up some issues. And again, I appreciate you guys coming in. I think it's been a little while since you guys came here, and I personally appreciate you guys being here. It's a big step towards getting together, so. My understanding is, unless I'm mistaken, and please chime in if I'm mistaken, but the first, there's a few orders that we wanna talk about, and one of them is the topic of discussion for demo rides for motorcycles, and permitting versus safety concerns, so on and so forth. So, you guys, I'm the same understanding, that's why you're here?
My understanding is based on your June 19th letter.
Okay. And other topics would include the increased fees, emergency services, if you guys are aware of that at all, or if you guys are here to talk about that at all today. And the third would be, I think, permits for a flat track and fireworks permit type thing.
Those are things that were not included in the letter, and we're not prepared to address them.
That's fine. I mean, they came after the letter, and there's things that the Motor Speedway has talked about with the town recently. We were thinking that, since you're here tonight, and we have, you know, we could talk about the fireworks permit, if you want.
My understanding is, and Dave and Matt will correct me if I'm wrong, that we have all the permits for the flat track race for next year. So, if I'm mistaken on that, somebody should let me know, but the planning board has approved that, and we've paid for the inspections, and I think we have the permits. Am I wrong?
No. Was there an agenda tonight, Mr. Chairman, as far as?
I don't think there was a hard printed version of an agenda. I think it's why you're at the table, we try to maybe lump some other stuff into it and start negotiating and start having conversations. That's, and I'll take responsibility for that. I'm just saying, if we can gain a little ground today, I would appreciate it, and this board would, and this town would, and I'm sure your facility would as well. We're really trying to get back on the same page, so that's kinda why I brought those up. If they're not on the slate, then they're not on the slate. Not an issue. There are things that need to be talked about down the road, but I think, small steps, right?
I'll interject. Most of that lies in my purview. We came here to talk about Bike Week, that's what the letter was for. I had an idea that this was gonna spawn into more topics, which obviously, there was no agenda given. Quite frankly, the issues in which you wanna discuss have been asked for email responses for three-plus weeks, and have gotten no return, which I'm assuming was the point of trying to drag us down here to discuss this in public. I would be happy to discuss them if there had been ongoing conversation that has already been initiated from the track multiple times, and we have received nothing, obviously because the plan was to try to hammer it out here in public, and quite frankly, I don't think that's fair. The questions that were proposed in return of a quote were completely in line, and we've received crickets from said items.
My suggestion would be this. Why don't we talk about the demo first? And if you have questions that-
That we can address simply?
We'll see if we can answer them tonight. If not, you know, we'll try to answer them in writing, or we'll have another meeting.
Yeah, no, I agree, and that's why I started off with demo first, 'cause I knew that's what's the topic, and I don't mean to drag anybody anywhere. So, we're not, this is, to me, it's a huge thing that we start negotiating, we start talking, we get this thing off the ground, so we gotta all work together in the same town. That's my goal, that's my goal.
Let's settle Bike Week, whatever concerns or questions you have there, and then if it's something that's an easy, addressable lift, then I have no problem addressing it. But just to give you the backstory of why I'm not overly comfortable going through it, because we've asked multiple times for communication and have yet to receive that.
It could well be that there should be some meetings before, there should be some discussions before there's a public meeting on that, but let's see what, see what questions you may have.
Okay, all right. Well, the biggest question is, is there an issue with wire requests for the demo rides? So, we put down a certain thing on the demo rides? Hold on a second. We put down a notation in the permit for demo rides, to have a marshal in attendance of those demo rides. There wasn't a marshal involved in that. We've reached out to our police chief, who has statistical data on safety and concerns of what just happened over the course of the year. So, I guess I leave it in your court a little bit, if you could explain what the issues are with that.
So, let me try to address that. So, first of all, I think we've got a difference of opinion here as to whether the statute you're proceeding under applies at all. Certainly, it's an 1850 statute, it's not a great fit for this event, but there's not much sense in our fighting over that. You know, if that had to be resolved in a court, that could be done. So, we didn't come here tonight to discuss that. Obviously, we have a difference of opinion as to whether this is parade or procession. And we can, we can talk about that, but as a practical matter, that's a legal matter that probably isn't gonna get resolved. We do think that the, we could benefit from a better understanding of how the process for the issuance of these special exception licenses, or special licenses, is carried out, but that may be for a different night as well. We think the principal matter addressed by your letter of June 19th is public safety. That is, it's what you raised in your letter. I addressed that in my reply letter in July. Your counsel responded with, you know, a dispute over whether this is a parade or a procession or not, but we haven't really addressed the public safety issue. So, I think that's what we ought to address tonight. And I just say that there is a special event license for Motorcycle Week, and the history of that is that that was designed primarily to prevent individual, the requirement of individual hawker and peddler's licenses for everybody during that event. So, there was one blanket special event license. And your special event form talks about, doesn't talk about parades, it talks about, it talks about hawkers and peddlers, which, and rope dancers, I guess, which is covered by the statute, whatever a rope dancer is.
I'm afraid to ask.
So, one of the, one of the questions that we would have is that these demo rides have been going on for 12 years, and to my knowledge, this is the first time that the town has raised this issue of marshals. Harley-Davidson and Indian have made very clear that they won't do this if there's a marshal involved. And that would have economic consequences for the track, and arguably, economic consequences for Loudon as well, because it's part of what attracts people to the week. I used to be an Assistant Attorney General, so I remember back in the old days when Motorcycle Week was, our biggest fear was that Motorcycle Week would be held on the same day as a Seabrook demonstration, right? It was pretty wild in those days. And there are some, if you think about the marshal issue, there are some, there are some safety issues attached to that as well. I'm not a motorcyclist, so I can't really comment on that, but I'm a bike rider, and I know that riding in a peloton is a lot more complicated than riding on your own, and likely to lead to more crashes than if you just have individual riders. And my understanding is, this system puts out three to four riders at a time. And if you have a marshal, you're gonna have to have more riders at one time. Might arguably feel more like a parade than the current system. But, so one of the questions we would ask is, in terms of facts, what's changed that causes this now? So, in your letter of June 19th, you cited certain statistics that we think are Motorcycle Week globally, not the rides. So, in 2023, for the total week, there were 43 citations. We don't know how many complaints there were at Citizens and that week, and we've not been able to find out how many of those citations might have related to the demo rides. 2014, there were 54 citations during Motorcycle Week.
2024. 2024? I'm sorry. You said 2014, 2024?
2024. 54 citations and three complaints. We understand that in 2025, the total citations was 53. So, and none of this is specific to the demos, it's town-wide. Not surprising. I mean, my guess would be that towns surround, I live in Concord, and my guess would be that there's more citations for motorcycles in Concord during Motorcycle Week. But those three figures are very much in line, year to year. Three complaints in 2025. In short, probably, it's probably true that bringing a lot of motorcycles to Loudon is going to result in an increase in citations, although it's been pretty consistent over these three years. So, specific to the demo rides, there were, as I understand it, we got this information from the Chief of Police, who can contradict me if I'm wrong, there were 14 citations that were related to the demo rides. There was one accident, but that accident occurred on 106th, not, not on the route that is used for the demo rides. So, those citations represent less than three cents of 1% of all the people who rode during those demo rides. There's a question in your letter as to whether these riders are experienced. Every one of them has to be licensed in order to be allowed to ride these demos. My understanding is that to get a motorcycle license in this state, or in other states, you have to go through a two-day course or a three-day course. So, they're experienced riders. Now, they may not be, we would agree, they may not be experienced on the particular motorcycle they're riding that day, but within reason, you would think, just away, if you demo skis, you have a pretty good idea of what skiing looks like. So, and we believe that with respect to the one accident that occurred, it would have been more serious if it had occurred in a pack of riders, because there were other riders that were behind that rider who went off the road. So, I think the issue here is, if you believe, if the town believes that there's a public safety issue here, there are other ways to deal with this, other than having a marshal attend these riders. You can put signs on the route, you can add police details, and we understand that there is a, that you have a state grant for that. We're, New Hampshire Motor Speedway is willing to pay for additional signage on the route. We can take steps like, if you're issued a citation during one of these demo rides, we have your name, next year you're not eligible to ride in the demo ride. I mean, you know, obviously, we tell people in advance, don't exceed the speed limit. We certainly do not countenance that, and if people exceed the speed limit and are subject to citation or arrest, so be it. I mean, that's, that should happen. So, that's, that's our view on the public safety issue. And we don't think anything has changed year to year, in fact, arguably this year. We, I can't give you statistics to compare for, of those global citations or complaints, how many actually result, how many are the result of the demo rides? And, you know, there's gonna be some noise associated with motorcycle riding in the community, no matter what. I live uphill from a very straight road in Concord that doesn't have any houses on it, and I can tell you that during Bike Week, I feel like I'm in the middle of a motorcycle. So, I'm sure there's complaints about that as well. So, I guess what I'd say is this, we're here to try to resolve this problem in a way that resolves concerns you have about public safety, but also maintains a program that has resulted in pretty significant economic benefit to the track, and arguably, to Loudon as well.
If I could speak up at this point and clarify on some of the statistics, just so you have it. When I went through and ran our statistics that we provided as part of the 91A request, I started the time period at 9:30 in the morning, and ended it at 5:30 at night. As we know, the demo rides went from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and I wanted to cover that half hour in case somebody went out right at 5:00 or what have you. And I also pulled it specific to the roads that the demo ride was on, and then went back and verified, mostly by license plate, that these are the cars. The statistics you have are directly related to the demo rides. So, when it says the total number of citations on the form, that's the total number of motor vehicle stops that we conducted that are documented, not when we just screamed at somebody on the side of the road to slow down, you know? And this year, 2025, the Loudon Police Department was much more heavy-handed in handing out citations, and that was a direct order from me, to the tune of about $5,000 to the State of New Hampshire and some stuff that we'll still end up in court, trying to prove people guilty on. But that was a direct order I gave to the officers this year, that I'm done with the motorcycles. The, I believe the high speed we saw for the week was 83 miles an hour, which is, I think, everybody in the room completely-
Ridiculous.
Unacceptable.
Totally ridiculous.
And we have, I also have speed reports here that I'd be happy to provide for the last three years from our speed trial. I don't know if I provided those ahead of tonight's meeting or not, but when the demo rides are going and the weather is nice, we're looking at 100 motorcycles roughly on the road per hour while the demo rides are on. And I, my opinion on this is the solution is enforcement, and we have tools at our disposal to do that. Whether it's a police-paid detail, or we continue with highway safety money, you know, I address this as a problem with highway safety, which is why we got additional funds to stop motorcycles, and they gave it to us. So, that's clarification, all the total number of citations was directly from the demo rides, and per, you know, per my order, we were-
Are you suggesting that the 53 citations, or 54 that I've cited are only for the demo rides?
That is correct.
And that's certainly not what we understood. But I would add, if that's true, very consistent year to year.
Yep, and we did lose two days this year due to rain where they didn't get on the road at all.
And we would agree with you that the solution to this is enforcement. And- And education. And I would think, yeah, and I, for example, I would think that if after the first day of the demo rides, a report on the number of citations for that, for that prior day was provided to the track and to Harley-Davidson and Indian, and therefore to the riders, that might, that might help. You know, if you know that you're about to be cited, if you exceed the limit. But I guess I'd say this, for the reasons that we've discussed before, I don't think that problem gets solved necessarily by having marshals, because for one thing, in that, if you have a larger group, then what's gonna happen is, people, I can tell you based on my own bicycling experience, you wanna keep up with the group, right? So, you may see this speeden order can do that. So, and we, you know, if I'm wrong in the statistics, I'm wrong. That's not what we understood, but even then, if you do the quick math on it, it would be less than 1% of all demo riders received a citation. And there were a lot of them, as you pointed out.
I'd like to expand, and then I'll, just on a couple of issues, and then I can let the rest remaining board chime in and/or fire, but just a couple of points you brought up as far as the experienced riders go. I, I'm old enough where I didn't have to attend the Motorcycle Driver's Course, the one they're holding now, and I should have. I should have, because I think it's a pretty good course. However, not everybody that comes out of there is experienced. They're driving a very small motorcycle that's issued by the state for them to drive, or they can bring their own motorcycles into it. But when they leave there, they're, when they leave there with their license, there, there's still a lot to learn, and there's still a lot of things they need to understand and manipulate and however, but they're very, they're not experienced as far as I'm concerned. So, and the same is motorists in a car. Just because you have your license doesn't mean that you're an experienced driver in a car. It takes years to perform that. So, that is a concern that just, based on your comment that if they have a license, you assume they know how to ride a motorcycle, I would never assume that, number one. So, that, to me, is, takes away a little bit of the safe, you know, adds a little more to the safety issue. The second thing is, you brought up a good point about the notifying you guys as far as if someone gets a ticket and they're not allowed to do this, blah, blah, blah. I don't know where that falls under legality, if we can release names and dates of birth to somebody, or at least names to another agent, to an independent place to say they just got a ticket, right?
I would not deport our motorcycles, and no offense to you guys, but-
Well, they post it on Facebook anyways.
Look, look, look. Selectman Gilman, I have to politely disagree with your assessment on motorcycle riders. Yes, I would say there is a percentage of riders that are new, but having been at New Hampshire Motor Speedway for the 12 years that this event's occurred, I assure you that better than 90% of the motorcycles rolling into our property and being parked are heavy baggers by experienced riders who get off and wanna ride the latest new Harley-Davidson. And just as anybody in this room, that's a good competent driver of a motor vehicle, you could get in any pickup truck tomorrow and you figure it out really quickly, you know, okay, maybe the, with the way the electronics are today, it would be a little difficult to understand maybe how to turn on the fan or your air-conditioned seats or whatever. But on a motorcycle, the same principles apply, clutch, brake, throttle, rear brake, front brake. They all know how to ride a motorcycle. If they didn't, I think those accidents would be much more a problem, and they're not. And I think year over year, there have been very few incidents on Lower Ridge Road and Loudon Ridge Road as it relates to truly an inexperienced motorcycle operator. Well, I was just gonna also say, and I don't want it to be lost on this board and this town, you are making a choice when you get in your car or you get on a motorcycle. If you wanna drive like a knucklehead, you should pay the consequences of being such a knucklehead. But to punish the track and to say that a vendor suddenly has to have a mandate, it doesn't make any sense, because I don't believe it's truly in the best interest, education and enforcement, and we'll continue to tell Harley and to tell Indian, and we have, and we will continue to do such. You need to understand, you speed, you're gonna get a ticket. And I've been a very, and Chief Flanders knows this, I am a proponent of impound the damn thing, put it on a flatbed. If you catch a guy going 80 on Lower Ridge Road, they should be arrested. End of story. So, I'm not trying to argue, but I just feel like there's, you need to understand that as an avid motorcycle rider myself, I ride thousands of miles a year. To label everybody that comes to New Hampshire Motor Speedway as inexperienced is, yes, they're our percentage, but it's a very small one.
I guess I'd respond to it this way, it doesn't, I don't necessarily, I'm not trying to counter the points that you're making, but if this was, if it was a real problem, as I think, as David pointed out, with inexperienced riders, you would expect to see more accidents, and you would expect to see more citations. But, you know, admittedly, now, you keep using my own experience, but, you know, bikes have gotten very different from what they used to be, and, you know, with disc brakes and with wider, much wider wheels, they handle differently. So, you know, it's recognized with motorcycles as well. But you would expect to see, I would think, more accidents and more citations if people were really inexperienced. And, you know, maybe another way to handle that is for the vendor to understand, you know, if you ride essentially a Vespa motor scooter and you wanna pick up a big Harley and ride it, you shouldn't be allowed to do so. I mean, I don't know how they test that, but, or whether they could, but, you know.
Most states, if you're 50ccs or less, you don't even need a motorcycle license. But Harley-Davidson, Indian, you're not getting on any of their motorcycles without motorcycle endorsement that they have clearly seen and photocopied and put into their system.
Well, I wasn't attacking your facility and who you're putting out there for experienced and not experienced, but I know generally, there are a lot of inexperienced people riding motorcycles and driving cars, and these guys here can contest that. Every accident they go to on a motorcycle isn't always, isn't always a good ending. It could have probably been prevented, so I think that's kinda what we're looking at is public safety, and it's, maybe it's not the motorcycle, it's, you know, the pack of motorcycles driving together, but maybe it's the car pulling out of a side road, right? That didn't see them coming, didn't hear them coming. There's more to it than just we're saying, the motorcycles here are operating unsafe and they're, and they're out of control. We're not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, but-
Big heavy baggers come into the property. Almost 90% of them are big, heavy Harley-Davidsons, and they know how to ride that bike. They just wanna ride the latest motor or the latest model.
And how to do so without wearing a helmet.
And they, yeah, right, yeah. Not for me, but they do.
I'll move it down the table. Anything else on the board?
I would just say, having been in law enforcement for 29 years, you know, the figures, we can all talk statistics, which we always do, kinda like fishing, you're not always gonna get every one of them. So, whether you have an officer on every one of those streets identifying every one of those bikes, you're gonna miss a few. So, when it comes down to the public's concern, the people who reside on that road or those particular roads, they're worried about, as the chair said, backing out or driving out of their driveway, not knowing who's coming around the corner. It's always been an issue. I've been on this board for nine years, David and I have talked numerous times, and the concerns are those people who live on those roads, it was a town impact by us agreeing even back then as a select board to allow it to happen without some constraints. And I believe when it first started, there were the marshals. Don't know that Harley ever did it. Indian didn't come around for a while, but some of them, BMW and those other Yamaha, they would put those marshals there. And, and again, I'm not countering anything, but if you say that those people are experienced, then they know when they're following that marshal, what the distance needs to be and where they need to be in relationship to driving the roads and keeping you within the speed limit. So, I have the same thought process when it comes to inexperienced, as David mentioned, you're gonna get somebody on a 250, they're gonna try to get on that, they do have an endorsement, but the vast majority, as David admits to, are experienced drivers wanting to get onto the next best. Okay? So, if you do have that marshal, and I'm certainly not against the racetrack and doing what we're doing, but as a Board of Selectmen, we have to also take into account the people in our town who have raised concerns. I've spoken to David, and we've mentioned it in the past before other years, the possibility of getting those marshals, and David was honest and said that the likelihood of Indian or Harley-Davidson doing that is between slim and none. Well, to me, it's an offer that is only gonna take one other person or two other people for them to afford to have the safety in our town, and that's all the town is looking for, and that's what we're looking for, is to cover the whole town and reach out to them, and reach out to you for a reasonable agreement.
Statistically, Selectmen, what you just said doesn't line up with the statistics. 12 years this event has been occurring, 12 years. And there's been, how many accidents on Lower Ridge and Loudon Ridge Road?
Whatever the chief has told you. But we can live on, we can live on what if.
No, no, no. Look, we could bubble wrap everybody that gets on a bike, but the point is, the point is, what you're suggesting is going to deeply impact my company's revenue, and I'm just here to tell you, that is not fair, and I think enforcement and education is the way to go as it has been for the 12 years that we've done this. And you are talking about a legally registered and insured motor vehicle. There are businesses on Loudon Ridge Road. There are other businesses.
Oh, absolutely.
So, suddenly, because of traffic? Is that the concern, that there's so much traffic?
No, the safety of the vehicles increased in the area.
Selectmen Miller, you're wrong. You're not even, you're not even in the realm of reality, 12 years. 5,000 motorcycles rolled down that road this year, and those were, and the biggest percentage of them were safe, good operators.
I didn't say they were not.
So, to say what if, well, heck, I could say what if on 106th, more people get hurt or killed on that road than they do in any town road that I'm aware of.
Absolutely.
Well, so, what are we doing? You're making a decision, you're making a decision that is bad for our business, and it's only one of you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. One at a time, we gotta speak one at a time.
I'm looking out for the town. I do not look out for the businesses. My job as a select person is look out for the town, the residents who are within our town. The residents who are within our town, and that's all I'm doing.
And that's, that's, that's a wonderful thing, and I get it, I understand it. But what I'm trying to tell you is, you have precedence, you have history, and you have statistics, and none of them point to what you're suggesting.
Well, I can build statistics to agree or disagree with anyone else across the table.
We can agree to disagree, Selectman Miller, we can agree to disagree, but I'm just telling you, your statistics don't line up with what you're asking us to do.
Let me, let me suggest this, that, you know, you pointed out, you put a marshal out there, so how many marshals are they gonna have? If this figure is correct about the number of motorcycles per hour, then either you've got 25 marshals out there or you're gonna have much larger groups of riders. And I don't know how that's gonna help the safety issue. If, and also, at least according to what Chief has said, and I don't have statistics on this particular issue, you're not getting that many complaints. And, but on top of that, if it were really a problem, I mean, I, look, I understand. I might, I'll bet that people in Loudoun, there's a lot of complaints from people in Loudoun during the race, during NASCAR weekends as well, that it's hard to get out of your driveways, whatever it is. But if, if it were truly a safety issue, you would have evidence of more accidents or close calls, which I'm not seeing. So, I think the better way to address that is either more enforcement or, you don't have to give names, but it seems to me that if, if I were about to go out on a demo and somebody said, "By the way, yesterday there were 25 citations issued on this road," I'm thinking, "I'm not gonna drive above the speed limit."
Which that does happen currently, so. So, and I think we brought up the towing of the bikes as well, so that, that has happened.
Yeah, I don't think it's a point of we don't want to give names. I think we're, might be a little bit of a legal gray area. You would know, you would know.
No, I'm, I'm not suggesting names. What I'm saying is, you don't have to give the names of the people who received the citations.
Just how many?
Although if it could be done, then clearly they could be, they could be prevented from either demoing again that week. We could look into that.
And I just want to add, you know, I called Matt during Bike Week this year and asked for a message to be delivered to Harley-Davidson while I was out doing traffic enforcement myself. And Matt was very receptive to that, and I met with David during Bike Week.
Where'd you meet with me, chief?
On demo ride.
Yeah, I was out there. That's correct.
Um, and they were both very receptive of what we were doing. You know, I, I think enforcement has to happen to keep the safety of the townspeople. And I think we get less complaints from the townspeople because they see a cruiser drive past our house every half hour or see it parked in their driveway, or see it parked in their neighbor's driveway. I mean, we are out there with two officers between Lower Ridge Road and Loudoun Ridge Road, and I think when the people actually see you out there, they're less likely to call in and tell you there's a problem, even if they think it is a problem, because you're already out there and you're doing what you can with the problem in front of you, you know?
Yeah. So, I, I'll bring up the fact, I guess, we're more interested in the process and how you guys derived that conclusion was best for what was done with putting in that provision. You know, the, the special event license, as it's known, really is just a generic overall arching hawkers and peddlers blanket. It was never designed to be used as putting restrictions on things and, and kind of going through what an event looks like and kind of have an opinion. It was, it was, quite frankly, it was derived by Chief Blanchett and myself back in 2019 as a way to make the demos, vendors that come to New Hampshire Motor Speedway not send in $35, I believe at the time, individually to this board and get stuff at the last minute. It was a, the entire impetus behind that entire program was to clean up what was derived from this board, which you were a part of as kind of a mess, as hawkers and peddlers was known. So, we decided to make the decision to give the town $1,000, which was the high watermark for the hawkers and peddlers permits, and actually, quite frankly, more than that. So, we decided to give the town the money. It covered deputy coming down and doing the inspections. So, when we received a stipulation on that special event license, that was never the intent of said item to begin with. Secondly, we received the letter, I believe, halfway through the event to begin with. So, so that was part of it too. So, we would like to know the process in which this special event license was received, delivered, consultation to the police chief, the fire chief, and whoever it may be. We, we have no idea who has opinion on these special event licenses, which, again, I'll reiterate, was not designed as a license. It was designed to cover hawkers and peddlers to begin with. Something that I was a big proponent of, along with the board and the fire chief. So, that's what we'd like to understand for starters. I think that'll kind of set the tone for how we kind of summarize and end this. Is, what's the process? What statistics and consultation did you use to derive that that was the need? As we've seen, why we've asked for the statistics is frankly, we didn't quite see a need for that type of reaction, given the history of the 12 years. The letter that was written, we thought was overstated. So, we'd just like to know the process. We fill it out in regards to hawkers and peddlers, not asking permission to do the event, but to cover the 10 inspection fees, fire extinguishers, layout, all those sorts of things, and cover the fee that the town would have received for hawkers and peddlers licenses. So, that is our understanding of it. After it leaves our office, we deliver it to the fire department, and from that point forward, we have no idea who's talked about. So, I guess my first and foremost question was, he has all the statistics for previous years of Bike Weeks. When the board derived that decision, was, was he consulted? And was this hammered down as some pressing issue that this Bike Week demo ride thing is out of control and needs to be addressed immediately? Because, quite frankly, until we received the letter halfway through Bike Week, knew nothing about such a thing. So, I guess back to the communication factor, we want to talk about fair communications and talking about issues. We've had an entire year before we got this letter to address, hey, and again, he knows we pay for certain details at the racetrack for the vendors. We know Bike Week's coming. The line of communication of, hey, Matt, we got a problem, or David, we have a problem coming up here. There's this massive wave of concern about, has never happened. So, we get a, a letter mandated on something that we don't even agree has the ability to be mandated halfway through our Bike Week. So, obviously, that was the reaction that you received from us was nothing until we had this discussion. So, I, I think we would like to leave here with an understanding of what this process entails and who's, who's actively in charge of making the roundabout decisions to issue such kind of a notice of decision.
Yep. So, the, the special application gets handed off to the fire chief. Fire chief, I believe, hands it off to Brendan Pearl, who then makes us all, we all get a copy of it, and we all, who you see in this room minus a couple, but the fire chief, the fire chief, senior police chief, road agent, town administrator, myself, the other two board members, no attorney, and we all have a roundtable and discuss it like we are in public.
Okay.
In a public meeting.
Zoning and planning are all.
Zoning and planning are, are here. There's a representative from each, and we go around the room, we discuss it. I read it out, we discuss it. It goes around the room, and then it ends up with, we check with zoning, we check with planning, and then that's where we finalize this.
So, but back to that conversation, we, I mean, believe it or not, we actually watch some of these meetings. It seems to have our name in them quite frequently. But to the best of my knowledge, that was never prior discussed as a huge overarching issue. Am I missing something? Was there a, a big roundtable with all the heads of department that this is an overarching issue year over year that needs to be addressed immediately?
Let, let's go back to the process, because I think we're, we're bouncing all over the place.
Yeah.
Okay, it is a permit, and by town ordinance, which was voted in by our taxpayers legislative body, there are certain permits, hawkers or peddler's permit.
Correct.
And I appreciate you working with the fire chief to develop.
Yeah.
A more in tune, very, very much so, okay? But it is a permit. If you go through our town ordinances relative to hawkers, peddlers, the license for an event, it's all in a packet. Those permits have to come before the board of permit. The board of permit is the select board, and again, as he explained, the fire chief, police chief, road agent, zoning and planning. The requirement is that we receive it 30 days prior to the event. So that we have an opportunity to get it in advance, and then when the board meets, we have more information. That particular, because we only meet, meet once a month for the board of permits, and it's the third Tuesday of the month. Okay? We've got it that night, or the night, it was the night, actually the night before, if I believe, which was not within 30 days or outside of the 30 day window. Okay? So, when we got it, we had it. This is where we've had the discussion in the past, and I know, Matt, you were here as well, is that if someone is here at those boards of permit, that gives us an opportunity to discuss any of the issues that could possibly happen. Okay? So, we've asked for that. I was present when we asked for that. And virtually, I was told by another individual at the NHMS that it's not a requirement and they will not attend. And it didn't come from either one of you, but I was told it probably won't happen. Okay? It's not a waste of time if that's the process that people agree with, but it's really not, because it gives us a board of permit, all of us, an opportunity to discuss with an individual from the racetrack representing what we see as issues and have that discussion before anything is decided upon. But keeping in mind, over the years, there have been other complaints. They may not call the chief, they may call a select board member. Last year, we had people that actually came to a select board meeting with concerns. Okay? So, again, when we represent, I'm here to represent all of those peoples. You may not have heard from the chief that there were numerous complaints. Okay? But there could have been other people, and there was other people who live on the ridge who had concerns about the way that the bikes were going.
Yeah.
That's all. So, I mean, if we follow the policy that's been there for numerous years, if the permit that we're requesting gets sent in to the fire chief outside of those 30 days, and we have an opportunity to look at all the paperwork and then have a board of permit with someone from the racetrack, it gives a communication from the boards to the people at the racetrack. And that's, we've been asking that, I can tell you that, we've been asking that for a while.
Maybe we could agree on this. You had 12 years of past experience with this, or 11 years. And based on any complaints or what you received in 2024, there was a whole year in which you might have gotten together with people at the track and said, "Look, we have a concern about this." And, and whatever the process is, we have a problem that we need to resolve now.
Oh, absolutely. I completely agree.
You know, it's, is there a way to address this public safety issue without either creating more problems or effectively throwing out the baby with the bathwater? Because this is not gonna happen from the standpoint of that vendor. They said, "We won't do it." So, we, we're trying to figure out a solution to this that addresses your concerns. In particular, traffic enforcement concerns where this really lies, and I think that's the most important issue. Probably for the track, it's the most important issue.
No, I, I, I agree. And when you said communication, communication's at all time low. It can't be, we can't continue to do business together the way it's being worked now. So, we need to increase that, and today's a huge thing for that. You guys being here in this room starts that process and makes this a better process. We're learning a lot off you right now. I know I am.
Fortunately, we have another, what, seven months or so, or more before you really have to address this issue again. So, there's time to try to resolve this.
Right, and we don't want to wait till that, that's right.
So, so I'll, I'll check up a couple of things. Yeah, I've, I've been here going on eight or nine years. We graciously put together a calendar of events every single year and submit a letter every single year. It's in the first quarter of every single season. Bike Week is clearly identifiable in that letter, along with a slug of other things. The racetrack is operable from April 1st to October 31st. We can schedule something every single day if we want. That is what we are licensed and permissible to do at our facility. Bike Week falls into those same exact parameters. So, what I've said numerous multiple years, if there is an issue that needs to be addressed, then call, send a letter, and if it's that big of a deal for us to come down here, we will come down and address individual concerns. That did never once happened around this issue. That has been on that calendar of events since quarter one. And we received this letter halfway through Bike Week. So, point being is, back to the, we talk about the license, okay? Nowhere on that license, as it say, has to be submitted 30 days in advance. Not, not anywhere on that letter has to be 30 days in advance. So, I'll confidently disagree that that is not the case, okay? Back to you guys' process, understanding who's involved with these permits and what goes on. Quite frankly, we only do it to cover the hawkers and peddlers fee. It's not to have Bike Week the event. It's not to get permission. We operate at that racetrack some days, sometimes seven days a week. Multiple different things happen. Anytime that the racetrack feels that there's going to be a concern of 106 traffic, side road traffic, the racetrack always, essentially myself, reaches out to this guy and says, "Hey, this is what we have going on." Girls on the run is a good example. We say, "Look, here's our estimated crowd size. This is the impact we feel it'll have. What are your thoughts?" Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
So, we go step by step. Bike Week is no different in those processes, okay? So, every single thing that we do that we feel that we are gonna impact the town from a public safety perspective, a traffic perspective, or any overarching concern that the town may have, we reach out to the police chief and say, "What do you think?" And if we deem it necessary and he deems it necessary, we've never denied his request for details, traffic control, message boards, sign, not one time. So, I think the disconnect here is, all the events at the racetrack are farly vetted and communicated in advance. I don't think I've ever called him the day of to do a four man detail because we were unorganized. That's never happened. So, I think that's more of our issue here, is that what you're suggesting is really not the way that it's written, first of all. If that is the case, we will take an additional issue with that to figure out if it works best for our business, but currently, that's not the process. And again, back to the process, I was in constant communication with the police chief prior to this event. Not one time did what you issued in the letter come to my desk. If it had been, I would have come down here, knowing that that was gonna be what the presentation was to us, and addressed it with you folks, and we would have had this long resolved by now. But that's not the process. That gets back to my original question of the process. We fill that out with the intent, not to ask permission, right? We're having the event. We fill it out with the intent to cover the hawkers and peddlers fee, to cover deputy lakes inspections, to make sure that we're running a safe and organized event. That's what we fill it out for. We don't fill it out for restrictions from a, a board. If that was the case, we would get an event license for every single thing that we do, which is sometimes seven days a week. Furthermore, every single thing in town, if that was gonna be the case, would require the same exact treatment, which I don't think to be the case.
That's not true.
So, well, it is true, and, and furthermore, but hold on, let me finish. Let me finish. The letter that was written, who wrote the letter to us to begin with, with all these statistics on it?
The June 19th.
Who wrote that letter to us?
Who's the author of this letter?
Signed by someone.
Signed by the selectmen. Who drafted the letter?
I can't tell you who wrote that letter.
Well, it's an important question.
Somebody in this room wrote it.
So, somebody wrote this letter to us.
Just hang on a minute. I'm gonna go back to Mr. Gilman's point a moment ago. You pointed out, at least your view of it is, there's a lack of communication here. You know, if I go back to Cool Hand Luke, right, what we had here is a failure to communicate. I'm not gonna argue about who failed to communicate with whom. The track is a very important taxpayer in the town, and you have a legitimate interest in public safety. You have a role to fill on the board. However, we can improve that communication is to everybody's best interests. And I just, I'd suggest that, you know, this meeting can be the beginning of that process. If there are conditions that we can agree upon that will address the issues of public safety, that also allow us to have the event, great. If we can't, then we'll have to see whether there are other solutions to it, but it's, it's not, I mean, I think we need, we need that communication. And, I mean, look, I've been married for 54 years. I understand that there are often times when communication doesn't seem, doesn't seem to have worked. But.
No, I've mentioned, I've mentioned twice now, I appreciate you guys being here, and I also appreciate, and I mentioned the fact that communication is a huge issue on both sides, truthfully. I mean, there's a lot of history here, and there's a lot of good history, and there's a lot of negative history. So, it's time to come out of that. This meeting gets us out of that, breaks the ice.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just interject and say, you all have my cell number. If members of the board don't want to call me, fine, but anybody. If members of the board don't want to call me, fine, but anybody can call me. I would take your phone call. I have, on every correspondence I have sent to this board since first quarter, I have clearly stated, get any questions, give me a call, and my cellphone. And, so, look, but I want to, I want to be respectful. We're just trying to figure out, how do we resolve Motorcycle Week?
Yeah, I agree, that's why we're here.
Because if it's more education and more enforcement, let's talk about that. But I think Marshals is going to be catastrophically bad for our business.
But to tie a bow on that as well, communication, to be quite, quite honest, as far as public safety, is at an all time high from the racetrack to the police chief. We've never denied sending down a calendar near one, or quarter one, that's still received. The only summons we've received to come down and chat with you folks that had a concern was this letter dated that we received. And voila, here we are. So, I guess our point more is, if you need to talk to us more, if this board needs something from us, this is the first time that we've heard of such a thing to come down here. So, that's, I just want to point that out.
I disagree with that. We always have public hearings here and public meetings here, and there's always been an invitation for you guys to come down here as of the past couple of years where I think relationships got shut down. So, I mean, I'm going to call it what it is, like, we're portraying here that we're in this beautiful world, and we're not in this beautiful world right now.
Let's go back to what I think.
No, I agree, I'm just, I'm just correcting that it's.
Selectman Miller was finished with his question, but I wondered whether Selectman Griffin had any.
I'm just reinstating the fact that this is, that our relationship has never been a, never always been a positive one, from what I understand. And we're trying to move forward with that, so the.
Are we talking, are we talking to the selectmen?
The, yes.
The selectmen to the racetrack?
Yes.
You're saying is at an all time low?
I think so, yes. That's my personal opinion. Today is a huge step.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Based on, based on history.
This opens a huge door for us moving forward, but I want to pull back to where we stand today. We've, we've never had a reason to have to come down here to the point. Yes, you have open hearings. Unless we're invited down here for a specific concern, to be honest with you, we're pretty busy.
No, I know you are.
There, there's a lot of things that go on in these town meetings that don't involve us, and we don't need to sit here for some of them. So, point being is, you invited us here very directly, right there.
Dragged you down here.
Correct, and we're here. And so, but I want to reiterate, if we're talking about lines of communication, the line of communication is wide open. When it comes to NASCAR planning, as you guys are very well aware, there's multiple NASCAR meetings between traffic and EOCs and all these, these things that go on. They are very consistent from when I've started here. So, the disagreements between things that happen at the racetrack, yeah, sure, that's going to come up, but I just want to pull back. Don't think for a second that that's not first of mine when we help hold events. But back to this, this hawkers and peddlers thing, I think is the crux of the issue.
Let me go, and let me, let me just, I don't want to contradict my client.
No worries.
You were, you asked us to come down for a meeting in June.
Yes, sir.
We had, I had a conversation with Mr. Courtney, we agreed on a date.
Yep.
We agreed, you were gracious enough to make this a single issue meeting, which makes it a lot better than everybody having to sit through the session. So, I don't want to leave the impression that we are not here cooperatively.
Oh, no.
And we don't appreciate what.
That's not, you're here, that's, that shows you're not being uncooperative, so. Anyway, so I guess we can move, move to a point of discussion about.
If I could, just to finish, because we didn't really finish, Matt asked what the process was. And you made the comment, there is nothing on the application, if you will. We didn't develop it. Two people sat down, right? Okay, so it didn't get put on there, but it doesn't negate the fact that the town has ordinances that you're required to know about. Okay, we're not required to give you the ordinances. It's like building a house, you've got to come and figure out what you need to get that process going. Okay, it's a hawker peddler permit, and it falls under the rules that we have established here in town for many, many years. So, the thirty days is also in there. All right, it expands on every type of business that we have in town, what does and does not require a permit. Okay, hence the board of permit. So, you have to know those steps and you asked. So, if you know that you're giving us a letter of intent for the year, then you also know that you have to get those hawker peddler permits to us within the thirty days as it states. That gives us, again, an opportunity to see if there could be any issues. All right, and again, you probably don't read all the RSAs that are in the law book either, but if you have a question about it, certainly ask. I know the chief has a copy of all the ordinances there, I don't know whether he's given them to you. I can tell you that we've gotten permits well in advance from the racetrack, and then we've gotten permits that are on the date or just before. All right, David and I had that conversation in his office about getting those permits ahead. Okay, the motorcycle weekend permit, it was very short term, it came in after the deadline, well under the deadline. That's why you didn't get the letter back until halfway through the week. Okay, but it also gives us the authority as a board of permit to add conditions to any permit. So, if you saw the line where it says conditions, we can set conditions. The board of permit and the board of selectmen can set conditions. Again.
Within reason. I especially disagree, but.
Again, within reason. And as far as we were concerned, from the statistics that the chief gave us, because he did have input at that meeting, it was determined that we would have that condition set forth.
Okay, can I just interrupt for one minute? Back to this letter that nobody knows who wrote. It clearly says that fifty tickets were issued on, this would have been written sometime, I'm assuming on the nineteenth of June, from a meeting on the seventeenth, that Tuesday. Fifty tickets were issued. That's not what happened. Fifty stops had occurred, not fifty tickets.
Okay.
Okay? Then it said.
That, that would be an accurate statement.
Then it said seventy-seven calls from the public. When in fact, it was seventy-seven motor vehicle stops, of which not all of them, A, were attributed to Motorcycle Week, B, were even motorcycles, they were just motor vehicle stops, could have been a car, could have been.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, it was, it was actually seventy-seven calls for service, not, just relative to demo, so it was just to point out that we've been busy with calls for service since Bike Week had begun.
So, and then two accidents, of which one was in front of the Rusty Lantern and one was on one oh six, so, you know, state road. So, I guess my point is, Mr. Selectman, if we're going to sit here and figure out what conditions we're going to impose, I think it's fair that we also talk from a position of like, what's accurate? And just what, this is.
Well, that, that condition obviously didn't come from there because the paperwork was signed well before that information came to us.
Your three names are on this paperwork, so all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, did the chief of police see this letter before it went out? Did you even look at this?
I didn't.
So, I just, look at, my position is this. Matt and your fire chief worked to create what you said from an earlier meeting on six ten, the ease of efficiency, Selectman Miller, of hawkers and peddlers and inspections. That has now morphed into, well, we can add conditions and, 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 no, we're not at, we are a licensed business in the Secretary of State in New Hampshire, and we are open from April first through October thirty-first. I don't need a special permission from the board. I need communication, I need, I need, I need safety inspections. I need to make sure that tents over two hundred square feet are inspected, there's buildings, there's building permits, make sure that gas fittings, and Deputy Chief Lake does a wonderful job of doing all of those things. Zoning and planning, I'm already, I already, I'm not asking for a setback or a change of use, I mean, what, what's that even got to do with anything?
That is the board of permit that is required to have.
But, but that's a special event, we're not a special event. Everything we do is an event, Selectman, that's, that's the point, that's where we are like sideways going. We don't even get it.
But you didn't send in a license, right? You did the hawker peddler permit.
To make it easier.
To make it easier.
Right, exactly.
Stop for one minute. We're now going back to the question of whether you have the authority to do this. We disagree with you on this. You disagree with us. That's not the issue. The issue is, is there a public safety? We can, we can go to court and fight about that, and everybody can spend a lot of money, and we go to the Supreme Court, and maybe we'll get an answer that police is no one. Right? But what we can do is try to address the issue of public safety.
I agree.
And what, what we're asking is, in effect is, I guess we're, we're asking and we're making a point, which is, we don't think things have changed in how this event has actually been operated. So, we don't really see the, you know, what was, what was the reason for this? So, at the same time, how do we come up with conditions that will address your concerns over public safety, but also keep the event? That's, that's effectively what we're here for tonight, and what we hope we can do.
If you don't mind, just like, Selectman Griffin hadn't had a chance to have a discussion.
Well, I was going to say, I'm, I'm kind of been taking everything in, and I see obviously a business need in a business, maybe not need, but they, they conduct their operations. From what I understand about this special permit that gets put in, that was developed, it was for the hawkers and peddlers. We kind of put that under the umbrella of a special event, which could change or morph the, the ability for us to put it through a board of permit like any other special event, but I guess it's really not.
Well, no, a special event permit is different than a hawker peddler.
Correct, correct, but we put all the hawkers and peddlers, instead of chasing thirty people around, going, hey, you're going to be selling t-shirts, we put it under one. But then we also call that thing the same special event as a wedding with a hundred cars on a hill. I guess I don't have a problem so much with, obviously, the process, which I, I understand your point and I agree. We need, you guys need to understand the process and how the board of permit works. You guys admittedly watch some of these things, so you've probably seen a few. Whether you paid attention or not, and, and lent it the credence or the weight that it has, that's fine. I think for tonight, you have said it numerous times, and the selectmen said it numerous times, is public safety. And I think enforcement seems to be the best route. Obviously, I've worked with the track, and I understand their approach and how things are run there. So, when it comes, when they say education, I understand it, and I agree with it. So, between education and enforcement, I think that's where we find the answer. Not squibbling so much in so many words about a piece of paper.
I would think that one way to resolve this is, and I'm not the expert by any means, I'm not, or since I'm a lawyer, I'm not an expert on anything. But, you know, I think having the, the chief meet with the track to see if there are constructive ways that additional conditions that don't relate to the marshal can address issues of public safety would go a long way.
And to further that, if hawkers and peddlers is the crux of the issue, we can go back to just doing straight hawkers and peddlers again, and abandon this entire license altogether, if that's what you guys choose to do. So, and therefore, we wouldn't have never sent down a special event license to begin with. We would have just done individual hawkers and peddlers, which is what, how this thing has always functioned prior to me starting and him starting in his position to clean this up. So, if that's the answer, then we'll gladly start doing that, and we just will not file a special event license ever again.
I guess that's kind of my question is, so like, I guess what they're trying to say is, and to me, if they only had to do hawkers and peddlers before this, you would have food vendors, t-shirt people coming here with hawkers and peddler permits to the board of permit, and you wouldn't be able to put any kind of condition on the motorcycles. They're already having that event because they're the racetrack. You're only approving sales of food and t-shirts. So, now, just by trying to organize it as a special event, is what they're saying, is now we're putting a condition on that.
Correct. And so, back to the thought of public safety. Public safety is top of mind with every single thing that we do. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on public safety initiatives between our NASCAR event and some of our smaller events. So, some of the smaller events don't add up to a lot of dollars and cents, but public safety is number one. Road safety on one oh six is number one, how do you get off the property? This board, some of these board members have been involved when we had gift of lights during COVID, which turned into an utter disaster.
Yep.
But what did we do?
But it got fixed very rapidly, you guys took care of it.
We took care of it because public safety is number one on our, our minds when we post events. The number one question we have is, when you're coming to the racetrack, how many people do you think you're going to have, and we plan accordingly. So, again, to reiterate, we already do these things. Do we communicate that with you? No, we communicate it with the police, police chief. Prior to him, we communicated with the prior one. So, these things happen. And to think that we're negligent in not addressing those issues is not accurate. So, so that is kind of my suggestion, so.
And I just want to interject and add an opinion of my own here. Public safety with the motorcycle rides and speed day reach is an issue. No matter what happened at the board of permit when the license comes in, I had a plan for Bike Week ahead of time, and my sergeant helped me develop it as to how we were going to act because we knew it was a problem, we had concerns with the people that lived on the road because of the human element, and knuckleheads, as David called them earlier, that ride these motorcycles. So, we have a plan for what we're going to do for enforcement well ahead of the event because we, it's been a problem since I have been here with these people that just ride, you know, they ride the bikes like they stole, you know, and like I said, this year we're more heavy handed than ever. In twenty twenty-six, if this all happens again, we'll be just as heavy handed.
So, are we in agreement as a business and a select board that we will revisit this said condition for two thousand and twenty-six, and that we will work with the chief of police on enforcement and education? Is that?
The board, so the board would have to, obviously, we have our own opinions, but we like to function as a board. So, we would probably consider that, and we'd probably end up taking a vote on if we move forward or not move forward with that item.
In a future meeting?
Yeah, yeah, and so, we would discuss it further, and based on the information we've learned today, and we would, we would come up with a stipulation how we want to move forward. But I think a plan, like you had mentioned, a planned meeting with public safety, first responders is a huge step towards that consideration. And I can't, again, I'm going to speak for myself, I can't speak for the other two board members.
We're not asking you to make a decision to undo all this for next year, we don't have anything on paper for next year.
Right.
What we're suggesting is, we can get a recommend, after these discussions, we would hope you get a recommendation from the police chief that you could then consider.
And I would think we probably could throw that together before the police chief met with you for the next event and figured out what was going on. My suggestion, and maybe it's, it's a doable thing, maybe it's not. I'd like you see, meet with both fire chief, police chief, just to, they both intertwine, they're both part of public safety, it's what we, it's what we depend on. So, I would like to see another person added to that public safety list, that meeting. But guys can work that out, hey, I want to work it out, but that's what I would think. You guys agree with that?
I do.
Yeah, so, you guys agree with the fact that we would reconsider this and
Absolutely.
Table it, we have a discussion, yeah.
I think any event or anything that we do, and we have a discussion, we reevaluate each time.
Yep. I mean, I, I feel good about what we just did, so, I like it, I got to see your side of it, so.
Anything else you want to talk about tonight?
I do, those other two items. Didn't sound like you guys wanted.
We're just going. Keep on trucking. I like it, Selectman.
You're being the second.
How can we help?
Um, I think there was a comment, there was some back and forth about the increased emergency services for this coming up race.
Yeah, like fifty-seven percent increase. Year over, that is crazy.
And the best person to articulate that, and I think it's one of those things where I think the board and selectmen are behind the increase, but obviously, we're not running a business and we'd like to hear.
I wasn't clearly saying that it wasn't the increase, it's, I get the hourly increase. What I'm saying is, you went to almost a hundred thousand dollars from sixty some odd thousand. That is a massive jump. Yeah, you went from sixty-two, we're in a public meeting, we're talking about this.
You mean globally?
No.
Both?
Fire department.
Okay.
To ninety-three thousand dollars, we got sent an estimate. That is a significantly troublesome number. To get that, and then we responded back, hey, we'd like some questions answered.
Yeah.
Crickets, not a word back. So, we were working through, the fire chief works with our guy at the Speedway, Chris Dagnall, over in operations, so he has nothing to do with me or Matt, so I don't know where suddenly this, the communication stopped. But needless to say, what we were saying was, when you looked at the estimate, it really wasn't clear what days, how many people, were they even needed?
Right.
You know, and again, I'll let Matt address it a little further, but just. You know, and again, I'll let Matt address it a little further, but just so we're clear, that's a significant amount of money to go from sixty-two thousand dollars to ninety-three, ninety-four, whatever, I think it was ninety-three. That's a big jump.
We still talk about communication, and you know what? And I'm going to just speak out of turn, I'm going to speak with my own personal opinion. As soon as these guys come into the picture, we lose communication. I mean, granted, I mean, it's a great person, great person, and they're doing the job.
Love the guy.
But you understand.
I know Michael, but I hear he's a great guy.
But you understand that, right? Like, now you're a little nervous about what you send out or who you give it to, because now we've included attorneys and really, and really, communication does get shut down. So when we, as a select board, in the town of Loudon and yourselves as NHMS, and we engage and we throw attorneys into it, things stop. Communication stops. Can we send this? Do we not send this? Who's lead, who's not? We have an attorney involved, do we, we're going to not listen to the attorney and send something? So I think that's where things happen.
I don't disagree.
But where I was going with this, I think the information you're looking for might have gotten stopped for the sole purposes that we have attorneys and we knew this meeting was coming up, and I think that's what.
But why?
Yeah, but why? I don't understand.
I think we can address some of your questions as the escalation tonight, can we not?
Right.
And we have all the numbers. And if you want to be, if you want to communicate, let's just communicate right now. I'm not saying let's stay another hour or two, but you asked a question. I'm hourly, so, well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I think I'm looking at the fifth.
So maybe we can just answer the questions concisely right now about why it increased so much, and I don't know who from the town wants to speak to that, but.
Chief, you want to go through your increases?
There was a spreadsheet, right? Do we have a spreadsheet?
Need copies?
Yeah, it was a spreadsheet of names and numbers.
Yeah. Was that spreadsheet sent to New Hampshire Motor Speedway?
The spreadsheet that I've received was, had no dates, times.
Just had names and rates?
Names and rates on it. And to summarize, I want to clear up, we're okay with the rate of pay.
Yeah.
The rate of pay that was proposed in the quote, we are not arguing. We have no issue with that. The issue at hand is the amount of coverage needed to service our event. That was the question. So you guys, we can talk about attorneys involved, not involved, that's really not a big attorney question. It's more of a communication of what do we need for said event? The rate of pay, we are not disputing. We're fine with the rate of pay. Now, has it gone up significantly since I've started here? Absolutely. Is it in line with every other town? Yeah, I look at this, we're not arguing about that. We're arguing about the days and times, which we are busy and not busy, the crowd size in which we bring to the facility, and precedent from the days and times in which we have those things. That was the only proposed question. And we're sitting here talking, that was what I proposed back in an email.
Yep.
Very simply. And quite frankly, this could have already been resolved, had we got the answers we'd talked about. I would have emailed and/or Chris would have called him and resolved it, and it would have been done. So there's not a ton to talk about in the communication factor that when we get a quote, when I first started working at this facility under Chief Wright, the quote was twenty thousand dollars. Firefighters are paid fifteen, we're not disputing that, right? It's grown from fifteen to thirty to forty to fifty-two or sixty last year to now, all of a sudden, ninety-two thousand, okay? Now granted, the rate of pay has almost gone up fifty percent, but when you look at the number of man-hours and apparatuses has gone up significantly as well. The reduction in our capacity has only gone down.
Down.
So that's kind of our issue, and that's why I brought up, and I put question, quite frankly, I put question marks next to everything. We've also upgraded our facility accordingly between central alarm panels and all these different things that we have done, worked very hard with deputy chief to modernize our facility to start eliminating some of these things that we have been doing in the past to cover for deficiencies in the facility. The facility is at an all-time high when it comes to fire safety and egresses and all these things associated with it. So that's why we have a question about, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years in capital improvements, making our facility sprinkled, alarmed, central panel at our operations building, doors for egresses that hadn't been addressed in thirty years that we fixed. The list goes on and on and on. When I started here, there was a stack of papers this tall as far as deficiencies and code violations. Deputy, would you agree that the list is three pages at this point?
It's small over here.
So we worked tirelessly for that and we always have. So when I, the quote now goes from sixty thousand to ninety-two thousand, and I add up the number of hours worked, which is hundreds of hours more than what was the previous season. Yeah, there's some cause for concern. And so I graciously sent a response to try to resolve this without having this conversation. Hence why we didn't come prepared to really talk about it, but I hadn't received anything. So that's kind of where we stand, just the backstory of.
No, no, it wouldn't be successful if you didn't question that stuff, so we're not going to have a problem with you questioning, right?
Very big number.
So if we can go through a breakdown?
Well, could I just also add?
Yes, sir.
It's a very big number, selectmen, when you have budgeted.
Yes.
Long ago, and you look at annual budgets year over year, and when I sat down with my finance guy and I said, hey, what would we budget for Loudon Fire? And I told him that number, he fell out of his chair, because that ship has long since sailed, those budgets were in fourth quarter. So again, it's a matter of, you know, trying to do what's right.
Finance guys are worse than lawyers.
They have their right.
Don't be hard, I picked on you.
He's all sore.
And again, the timing is everything, communication's everything. When we gave these raises, it was before our town meeting, right? And you're figuring your figures out for the upcoming year, right, by your finance guys.
Yeah, but we're not questioning that.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
No, we're not questioning the rate of pay. We already, we watched the meeting, we knew.
I know that, right, so.
That's not what we're asking.
No, but I'm just explaining, your figures were probably in line, close to what we had for last year, and I don't know what he's got there, so I'm not answering for what he did, but then we had that pay raise this year, when your figures were, as you said, ready for the upcoming year. Again, but it comes down to communication.
When was that, when was that exactly decided?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
You couldn't tell me, you don't know when you just changed those rates?
Not an exact date, no.
How's that possible?
I don't have the figures here.
Was it February?
No, it was the past couple of months.
Was it August?
No, definitely wasn't August.
We have to go back and look at the minutes, there's no way I can, discussions that we have every meeting.
Well, I mean.
I couldn't tell you.
It's packaged quite nicely and I don't disagree with your direction, but what I'm trying to say is, when you're talking to a customer, like, we're a taxpayer.
That is correct, yeah.
I don't use your school system, I don't use your water, hell, I don't even use your dump. Yeah.
Oh, no, we got a dump sticker.
No, we did, we did get a dump sticker, okay, we use your dump. Yes!
What do they pay for that?
Yes! But my point is, my point is, Selectman Miller, you can't even tell me the date that you changed the rates.
Why would I? I didn't come here prepared to talk to you about the figures, so I didn't have the paperwork.
You're the select board member, you should know the date that you changed the rates for the firefighter.
Good Lord, do you know how many times?
This is not productive.
Yeah, this is not productive.
This is a personal attack.
Can Chief Blanchett just give you the answers that you're looking for?
It's just hard to fathom.
It seems to me that you're not going to be able to tonight say, well, this line is appropriate or this line isn't appropriate. I wonder if Chief Blanchett could just maybe comment on what in general has caused the increase.
So the prices come down from the original estimate here because I was forwarded a schedule from Chris, then I went, once I get the schedule, I was able to go back and trim some. I trimmed, it wasn't a lot, it was six thousand dollars, I trimmed, it was six thousand from where we originally were. And once again, it's an estimate, I try to be as fair as I can, like we were back in 2023 when we had the rain incident, I mean, we held people off and sent them home, so you didn't get billed for a lot of people that were scheduled expecting a day's worth of work that day. So we, and the other disclaimer statement I would say is, we've scheduled everybody till seven, but as you know, on track, this is a September race, we haven't had one since 2017, I guess. If the day is over truly at five o'clock or the day is over truly at six, we'll be cutting those resources out sooner, which you'll see a reduction in those hours. So what you're looking at year over year currently is twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars in increase, based on the estimate, based on the current schedule if we work the full shifts. The bigger reasons for those increases, number one, the capillary mutually fire contact had purchased a new computerized aided dispatch system. And previously, it was a system that could be manipulated easily by anybody pretty much at any time to reinsert data and stuff. This system is very compliant with CIGS requirements and things like that. So with that, the town also purchased a records management system that intertwines with that computer aided dispatch system, so that our patient care reporting for EMS and our fire reporting is all intertwined in with that number nine-one-one system and goes next. So what the result is, that data is consistent across all platforms, state, the regional dispatch, and the community. So data will always be consistent. Because of that, there's only, and because of the CIGS requirements, security requirements, only certain people are allowed to manipulate the CAD, and they have to be trained and certified and decided to operate the CAD. So knowing that there was going to be an expense added to this, what we tried to do this year is bring in a concrete fire alarm operator during the day shift only to manipulate the CAD, which is a new expense, you haven't had that before. On Sundays, we did have a concrete fire alarm dispatcher to set up a remote CAD at Station Two in case there was an issue in communicating with race control, the backup was at Station Two to keep the CAD in operation. So what we did this year is we shifted that position from Station Two to Race Control to reduce one position, essentially we didn't reduce it, but we've shifted it over and we won't have that position at Station Two. So that was a twelve hundred dollar a day ad on Friday and Saturday. Sunday, you already paid for that last year. The other ad is, and you spoke about this previously, is you've reworked your fire alarm system, which is great, because that's going to make things so much easier at the facility year-round, but that, by putting that master alarm panel at operations, that adds one person to the fire watch detail, because they've got to be down there to control it. So that adds one person each of those days to monitor that panel, that are in radio communication with the fire watch people that are in the tower. So that added a position. And then the other positions that were an add, maybe previously didn't have, was Thursday night coverage, where as you, I'm sure remember, last year, we had a pretty good fire in the infield and there was a lot of questions asked about response and response times.
I don't, can I interrupt you right there? What does that mean?
It means we received some criticism about the response time. Most of your competitors in the sanction body.
Have you heard of this?
First I heard of such a thing.
So I'll back up, historically, we had coverage on Thursday night.
Chief, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm the general manager of the track and that's the operations guy, VP, and we'd never heard from anybody, I'm sure, about response times?
Well, I mean, the guy that put the fire out is sitting right here.
I didn't put it out.
You were standing right there. Was the response time that we had sufficient to do that fire last year?
Well, I don't know, because I got the call, we responded, but the rumors I got were, security and a bunch of other people thought we were on site, so there was a lot of talk around, the cops thought we were on site, they were trying to put it out, somebody was thinking we were putting it out. Then we got notified.
Correct.
That we weren't on property, then we had to go.
The breakdown, the breakdown, to summarize, to get in.
It's just a lot of money that you're asking for, for what if?
I'd like to finish here if I may.
Could I just ask what the amount of money is attributable to that item?
Yeah, so the Thursday night detail is similar, every other night is, it's an engine, it's a forestry, and it's a chief officer, it's six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
And we didn't spend that last year?
You did not spend that last year.
But we called the Loudon Fire Department, they responded.
When we finally called, because our security guys, to the dismay of myself, attempted to put it out with a fire extinguisher self-sufficiently and realized that it was too big. So there was some scuttlebutt, and long behold, by the time they finally received the call, by the time you received the call last year, how long did it take for you to get the call and put that fire out last year?
I don't have any time to find it. It's going to be in the neighborhood of eight to ten minutes by the time you get there, people are too busy. So, so the increase, that's your Thursday night increase, that's an add, pre-COVID, we did have coverage on Thursday nights, we stopped coverage on Thursday nights after COVID, in an attempt to save some cost, but obviously, based on the experience last year, there is some risk. Moving back to a September race, more of your guests likely are going to show up on Thursday night, it has the opportunity to be cooler, potential for more fires. We strongly feel that we need to have that covered at the track, because it is a fall race.
That doesn't make any sense.
And then the other increase is Sunday after, Sunday during the traffic control plan session, four people for the engine at Station Two. Historically, I've been able to get people to volunteer to hang out and cover that engine. It just, it has been a battle every year and it's no longer sustainable to ask volunteers to do that position. It's just, I've tried, I've done my best, I've tried to buy food for them out of my pocket to convince them, it doesn't work. So your overall increase for added positions as the schedule is later right now, is twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Once again, if the days go shorter, in some cases, that number's going to come down, but on the retrospect, if you have a rain delay and it goes later, the price is going to go up, and those are things that you just can't control. And just one more thing, I went back as far as 2022, and on Sundays, day shift, we're paying Loudon, excuse me, Loudon employees in 2022, twenty-four, we're on payroll. In 2023, we were at sixteen because of the rain situation, we held a bunch off, they didn't end up on the payroll. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, and 2025, right now, we're scheduled twenty-five.
I think, Chief, that makes, I get your rationale, I do. I don't agree with it, but I understand where you're coming from. I think it's probably easiest if you just have a, like, what we received were just names and like that spreadsheet right there, it really didn't say like this was for Saturday, this is for CAD or whatever it may be. Would you just put that together and send it to Chris or Matt? And then let's have, because I don't think we want to have a marathon meeting going through this all tonight, but I think in fairness to Loudon's fire team and our team, let's just communicate and figure out what we agree or disagree to. One thing I will caution you on is, because an event occurs doesn't mean the event is going to always occur. Are we, I mean, I'm not sure what September has to do with, but neither here nor there. I'm just merely saying, send the information to our guys, let them kind of work it through and they'll go back and forth and we'll come up with a, I think we'll come up with a resolution that I think is fair.
Reasonable is the key term.
Well, reasonable, yeah.
Reasonable. So.
I'd be happy to do that, and I think Selectman Gilman explained why we held tight on this was.
Well, and that feels a bit slighted from this side, because I don't feel that should have been the case.
It's human nature, my friend, it's human nature, so I don't know what world you're in right now, but I know the world I'm in, and if I have an attorney and he's corresponding with somebody else, that there's an issue, then I'm telling you, I'm not sending anything, and that's just.
Well, why is a standby quote going through an attorney?
There's so much communication between the attorneys that, I'll take it on the chin right now, I'll take it. I asked the chief not to send that, for the sole purposes of, there's attorneys involved, I don't know where this whole thing was going to play out, I didn't know if this meeting was going to happen, and you know what? I'll take the hit on it, it's my responsibility, and I said, don't send it. So that being said.
Now you're okay if he sends it?
I am, yeah, as long as the attorney's all set with him.
I want to answer for Michael.
I think we got to get to the end of this whole thing, so.
Send it. Michael, I want an hour-long call to figure it out.
Yeah, appreciate that. Make it an hour and a half.
So obviously, I'm going to receive whatever the revision is, you guys are very well aware of the mindset here. The number of hours in which was presented is close to eleven or twelve hundred total hours between all the positions. Last year's bill, there was seven hundred and seventy total hours. Our event has only shrunk in scheduling. Our event has only shrunk in scheduling and we have made significant improvements to thwart some of the coverage. And our price has only grown. So that is the crux of the issue. We start camping for perspective, the Saturday before, we have thousands of units on property from Saturday. We don't have coverage for those things. So our point is, is we agree with the forestry unit, which we've used as a tool. Yep, all these things. Some of it, we are fine with the public safety coverage. The amount in which the coverage has increased is the crux of the issue. So that is going to, just so you know, that is going to be what comes from our office. This is no different for the last probably 30 years of the racetrack and the local fire department trying to agree on what is necessary for the event. The crowd size in which we have for a Saturday event is nothing like Sunday. Yet, the quote that we received is almost a mirror image from Saturday to Sunday. So therefore, Sunday, to be honest with you, I don't think there is a single question mark except for the fire watch, which I disagree with, that should be shrunk because of our simpler. So that's where we're coming from. So I'll gladly receive the email. I will gladly chalk it up to more questions and try to resolve it. And if it turns into attorneys, so then that's the.
So is the board good with, just let them pound it out? And then the fire chief coming back with us with the final of what happened? Similar to what the police chief's going to do with the bike thing? You guys good?
I'm good with that.
Great.
We're good with it.
Awesome. Wonderful.
You good with that, Chief?
Thank you.
We got to make it easier somehow, some way, right?
Sorry, sir.
And we're not to something.
Supreme be disappointed.
Bill and I will find something else.
Going to buy some lunch here soon, I guess.
There's some pizza in there if you want.
My wife says to me all the time, how can you stand dealing with such unreasonable people? To which I say, if people are reasonable, dear, I'd be out of a job.
Hey, wait, was that a shot at me? No, sir.
And the final thing I think we have, and correct me. We're done? Okay. We're done. See, that's what these are for.
Wonderful. Well.
Again.
On behalf of the Speedway, I appreciate the time and everybody from the city being here, the town, I'm sorry, being here tonight. Appreciate that very much. And duly noted, communication.
Our end too. It's not just you, it's our end, it's.
You all have my cell number, I don't have yours.